Welcome to our meeting. The date is August 5, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The city council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. At this time, I ask that we all stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The deputy city clerk will perform roll call.
Council President Jack.
Yeah, I'm here.
Councilmember Mark.
Here.
Stelk, I apologize. Councilmember Connolly.
I'm present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Doug Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hossi.
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Pollock.
Present.
Councilmember Lanfair.
Present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present. Also present are the deputy city clerk, Sonia Cisneros, Patrick Brown, the assistant city administrator and chief financial officer, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, and Keith Kurtz, the public works director. Individuals who have appropriate items for city council consideration should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or a study session, notification of the date will be given. A sign up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. And council members, I will have to stop this meeting at around 6:50 PM, so the city administration can prepare for our regular meeting at 7:00 PM. But I want you to understand if you do not feel like you've had a full chance to ask all the questions you want or get all the information you want, we will simply schedule another study session so that you can feel that your inquiries are complete. The item on our discussion for this study session is Parks and Recreation Project Financing. Mr. Brown, and knowing that we will be stopping at 6:50 PM, I would like to inform you, Mr. Brown, that also Brad Melama would like to speak, so I'll prompt you to allow him plenty of time to speak too.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you, Mayor, council members. So tonight, we're going to go over some major parks projects. And we're going to look at some different financing scenarios. So we'll just go ahead and jump right in. Parks and Rec Projects Financing. Some of the following scenarios will include using general fund reserves. So at this time, let's go ahead and review those five-year projections for '25 and the initial budget numbers that, excuse my voice, '26 budget. So hopefully you could see this. So in the '25 budget, beginning cash of $45.5 million. General fund reserves, the budgeted, well, we budgeted, it was 53.6. Projected, we're going to come up just short at 400. Hopefully we'll get a little bit higher. Transfers in of 80, so total revenue is of 53.2 million. Personnel services budgeted was 40.9 million. I am anticipating vacancy savings of 894,000. You'll notice that that is quite a bit less than prior years. So we're getting better at budgeting here. Operating expense budgeting, 11.7 million. The savings from operating expense projected at $488,000. Transfers out of 2.7 million, equally in the total expenses of 54 million. So for the '25 budget, we spent 4.1 million of reserves for the fire station three so far, and we're projecting to spend the rest of those funds in '26. We paid for our ladder truck this year, 2.3 million. And so the excess reserve used was 6.4 million. The ambulance and the police vehicle storage and training facility of, it was actually 1.9, moving to fiscal '26 of 1.225. So our ending cash, projected ending cash for '25 is 38.3 million. As per our fiscal policies, 30% reserves is 16 million, and that is to pay for two to three months' worth of expenditures. This leaves excess reserves of $22 million. So you come up here for '26. So far, the budgeted revenue is 53.8 million. Transfers in of 35,000. Total revenue of 53.9 million. We have budgeted, our personnel services budgeted at 42 million. Operating expenses at 10.1 million. Transfers out so far, 1.6 million. That includes, again, that is so far, economic development of 950,000, transit of 530,000, MPO of 62,000, and community development of 100,000. So then we take the excess reserve usage, the 1.27 for the fire station three to be completed. Ambulance of 409,000, even at that, I'm not sure it'll be even paid out in '26. That might even be moved to '27. Police and vehicle storage training facility, that will be paid out in '26. That would leave ending cash at 38.3 million. Cash reserves would be 13.4 million. And excess reserves at 25 million, basically. So far, I just want to do this for you, is sales tax revenue. We're 1.7% ahead of last year's collection. You'll notice in this line item here, there was a refund last year of $341,000. That was some sort of tax credits somebody had taken, so.
Mr. Nickerson has a question.
Yes, sir.
I'll let you get through this section, then I just have a question about FY '26 draft when you get through this.
So, so far, we have 14.8 million in general fund sales tax. And in the '24 sales tax category, 2.9 million. 2018 sales tax of 5.9 million for a total of 23.8 million. So we'll go back up here. Your question?
Scroll down, okay, you're there. Now, what I noticed first of all here is that the excess cash reserves is about 2 million more than it is already in '25. And I also noticed that our operating expenses are lower than the previous year. So I'm just kind of curious what's driving those.
We had some bigger operating expenses. I will tell you that our contingency account was quite large, and I have reduced it down to 500,000. So this year, it was at 2.9 million. And so I will tell you, it's coming quite handy.
Contingency is just for the unknown things that we didn't expect that may show up?
Yes, and so we have used Heartland Event Center expenses that we've come into for that and some other expenses.
So that adjustment is helping increase excess cash reserves by 2 million more than what we are right now?
Yes.
Almost 3 million.
Again, this is not finished. So council has a couple more budgets to hear, and some capital projects are in there, so.
Okay, so those numbers more than likely will come.
The transfers out will go up. I'm looking at it probably going up about 2.7 million. Typically, last year, we had a citizen, or our permitting software was paid out of there. We had information technology computer upgrades of 400,000 out of there. We had Jackrabbit Run capital equipment. We had Heartland Shooting Park, and so some of those will be coming back up.
So even if we do see an adjustment of, let's just say, 3 million, it's a pretty darn good thing to almost break even after two years and have the same amount of excess cash reserves.
Yeah, that's my goal. So, yeah.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. You mentioned on this draft that it's not final, and I totally get that. We've listened to a few different presentations so far, but not made any decisions on those. So when you put this together and you look at, if you scroll up just a little bit at where we have Personnel Services, that's employment, that's paying people?
That, no.
Where are salaries at on this, I guess?
So we modeled 3%. And then we also have FOB contract, which is a little higher, so we'll factor that in. We're close, but it will go up.
Because we've talked, I just don't know, I guess when we look at this, does this include new FTEs from some of the folks we've talked to so far?
No.
So this is, if we add any of these, sorry, animated, if we add any of these FTEs, like the one that Chief Denny asked for, or the library asking for two equivalents of FTEs?
They do not. So if you add, and I realize this all can change. So if you add an officer, the library, and I think Todd put in for parks, maintenance person, here, and a reclass, a couple other reclasses, you're looking at about 500,000.
Okay. What about the capital that was asked for? Does that come out of this cash reserves, or is that somewhere else?
That's somewhere else.
Okay.
The only thing, and I will tell you here, so on this 1.225, last year it was 1.9 million. So, and this was for the police department. So in Chief Denny's capital request, he put a request in for a law enforcement firearms range for 675,000 at Heartland Shooting Park. So he didn't go over it with you guys on his budget presentation. So I don't know if it's still in there. I don't know, I can't gauge what you don't know.
What about like the vehicles? Those nine vehicles he asked for?
So these are great questions. So here's my thought on this, is I am going to come back with the full budget and have more discussions on, okay, what FTEs do you want to hire in? What capital equipment do you want or not want? And have those conversations so that I can finalize the budget.
Beautiful. So you're saying when we're done with all the presentations,
Yes.
we're going to be able to see this, and then line items of, we want two FTEs here and one here, and we can go through and say, eh, sorry, Chief, you're out, but we like this one? Oh, that's beautiful. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. Pat, if you can go down a little bit to the excess cash reserves. So it looks like it's pretty healthy, and again, it's going up, you know, 2 million to your draft. So some of the sales tax that you listed are dedicated for capital projects, just some of the 2004. So some of those are, can only be spent for capital projects. So with this excess reserves, and the fiscal policy is 30%. I think at one time, the state had a 50% excess reserve capacity. Is it still 50%?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we're a little bit below the state, but there is still a state requirement to be at that 50%. If we have excess reserves, is there any opportunity to actually do a one-time property tax relief? Because our sales tax is doing quite well, our community is doing quite well. And that's, you know, should there be an opportunity for property tax relief, is that an opportunity at all in this budget?
If council has that direction, then yes.
So we could do, whatever, you know, a million or $2 million property tax relief just to give back to the citizens, and it wouldn't significantly make any effect, at least in this five-year rolling chart in front of us.
Yes, and I did an analysis actually on, I'm trying to remember, it's been a while back. So I took the casino tax and thought, okay, if we wanted, if city wanted to give this back to property tax people, it was, it came out to like $14 per household. So, and that was at 1.3 million. So you could extrapolate.
Now, having sat this afternoon in a property tax hearing in Lincoln, you know, it's one of those, there's a lot of stress in the community, and I think even though it's not significant, and it's not going to significantly hurt our budget, I would certainly like the council to consider some piece of property tax relief, whether it's from the casino tax, or particularly, the casino tax came across, you know, as property tax relief, but most of that's going by the state, and the state is using it for that same purpose. I think that would be a great idea, Pat, and I would certainly like the council to consider other options as well, or at least as a part of that, so, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Steele.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pat, my questions were along that line. How much is budgeted for the casino and gambling taxes?
I believe I have 1.3 budgeted for fiscal '26.
How much is that over last year?
Originally budgeted at 750. So with the resort being open, it's increased.
And are you penciling in anything for any kind of property tax relief, like what Chuck was talking about?
I have not.
That's something that we'll discuss later then?
Absolutely. If council would like to do that, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
All right. Okay, so after this review, so here's the projects that are including the financial scenarios or models. First one is Island Oasis. In the water park master plan study that was presented on October 18, 2022, there were three improvement options. Option one was immediate repairs, as approximately 200,000, and those have been completed. We have option two, add 2.2 million to 2.7 million, so I added 300,000 for inflation. And that looks like... So this is, this is part of that presentation. So this is the immediate, and this is what was completed. Here's the basic. So this is replacing filters, pumps, strainers, backwash tank chemicals, this deck repairs replacement, speed slide, tower railing, sand, removing the sand areas, replace concession stand equipment, some of that's been done, and other repairs around the facility. So this is 2.2 to 2.7, and like I said, I moved it to 3 million. And then there's the enhanced significant. So this is the 15-9 that was in the scenario as well. So this is more on customer use. Some of the slides that were presented, that one's hard to look at. It was separation of some pools, a deck area, you know, council has seen this, I think, four times so far. And so, so this cost was 12 to 17 and a half at presentation time.
But the basic should get us a lifespan of 21 years, right?
Yes.
I'm thinking if we're going to plan an aquatic center up north, maybe we ought to proceed to see how that planning goes. And that may affect how we decide to improve Island Oasis. Does that seem reasonable?
Absolutely does. And so that's the Island Oasis. Ryder Park Baseball Field Improvements, cost of the project is 3 million. 745,600. And donations, and I took this off of Todd's agenda item, was 182,662. So it's below what we thought we would have for donations. So in the financing model, I used 4 million. Stolly Park Train Area Improvements, cost of the project is 2 and 1/2 million. Donations of 800,000, actually, that's probably a little south of what they have. So, but in the financing model, I used 2 and 1/2 million. South Locust Trail, the Camp Augustine, cost of project is roughly 6 million. Keith promised to bring it in lower, though. So here are some of the scenarios that I want to share with everyone. So scenario one, you can see up here, it's a 9 and 1/2 million 10-year amortization. So we're including Ryder Ballpark, 4 million, Stolly Park Train Area, you have 2 and 1/2, Island Oasis is 3, so total project of 9 and 1/2, and total debt of 9.65 million. So the debt service on that is roughly 1.1 million. So in order to pay for that, we would have to use both food and beverage funds and general funds. Scenario two, also the same 9 and 1/2 million, but using a 15-year amortization. This drops the payment down to 871,944. Scenario three includes the South Locust Trail. This will be a combination of using food and beverage, general fund, and 2004 sales tax. Each of those different funds would pay their allocated part of this loan. So it would equal, out of those three funds, would equal the payment. And that's a 10-year amortization, so that's pretty challenging right there. Scenario four is the same, but a 15-year amortization, and it drops down to 1.4 million. That is a little more user-friendly, instead of a 10-year. So on the water park, if we do the enhanced and significant financing, it's 16 million. If we did 20 years, 4.65%, you're looking at a payment of 1.36 million. And so the source of those funds would be 2004 sales tax and a general fund. So I didn't.
Mr. Hossi.
Pat, can you back up two slides? When you had, yeah, scenario four. So each of those projects on a 15-year amortization, first of all, I'm assuming that each of those projects would, that their life cycle is at least 15 years?
So to your point, the actually Ryder Ballpark field, we would do a 10-year. We would figure that out because the turf lasts 10 years. It would need replaced.
Yes, that was really my question, because we talked about the water park, and it's a 20-year. You know, we talked about it, you know, for 20 years, so I'm okay with doing a 15-year amortization. But if we, I don't want to do a 15-year amortization on something that only lasts 10 years.
I absolutely agree. We've actually done that in the past, where we did the, actually, the 911 center and a fire truck, we bought at the same time, and we paid the fire truck off in five years, and we're still working on 911, so.
And I like scenario four, with, you know, with the shorter one on the one that only lasts 10 years, so.
Oh, you like this one, three?
I'd like the 15.
15? Okay.
But could you just piece out the 11-year piece?
Yes. Yeah, that's what I would do. So items to consider.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Sheard also had a question.
Thank you. I want to kind of comment on what the mayor said about Island Oasis and maybe, just having a discussion. Is this an appropriate time to do that?
Absolutely.
I kind of like that idea of, I know we've pushed it, pushed it, pushed it, but knowing what is possible or could be possible in the Good Life District, and thinking about what could be possible if that was a part of, this is going to be crazy, but the idea of taking Island Oasis, instead of putting 20 years into it where it's at, attaching it to an aquatic center somehow, up at the Good Life District, and thinking through how we could add to that with our budget, but also use Good Life funds to make it more, make it more impressive. I just, I want to throw it out there to maybe think about not jumping in right away on that. How would that impact financing on something like this? If we did it separate, does that impact it?
The financing part, no. So I know currently there's engineering going on with Island Oasis. That's just part of the cost of it, so.
But we haven't done it yet, right? So we have the opportunity before it gets too late, to just think about what, long-term, long-term what it could be. You know I'm a dreamer, I'm kind of an idea guy, that's what the license plate says. Just thinking, I put some thought into this, and I threw this at you, and I've talked to a few others. If we looked at an aquatic center that is indoor/outdoor at the Good Life District, and maybe even, you know, you think about Eagle Scout Lake and having some other opportunities there, and just thinking about what it could be at that location, is that long-term better than having two aquatic centers, one outdoor and one indoor? Could we have some efficiencies there? Could we have some economies of scale? Maybe look at who manages it differently? Just, I don't know, throwing it out there to start a conversation before we go too far into 15-year, paying, you know, 1.3 million a year for it, or whatever that would look like. Just get some thoughts.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I like the idea of, let's not do too much at the South Water. I like the idea of, let's not do too much at, at the South Water Park location until we decide what can happen in, in the Good Life District area. I think that makes perfect sense. The only concern that I have about the location north is the walkability part. I don't know, and maybe Todd does, but I don't know how kids come there. This afternoon, I was at Standing Bear High School in Lincoln, and it's not walkable. There's, there's not even sidewalks that kids can wa, they can't walk to school, they can't bicycle to school. So as I think about who comes to the water park, I don't know how many kids bicycle to the water park, you know, and what difference it would make if it was up north, if they could make it unwalkable, unbicycleable. So, you know, that's the concern. We might have a great facility, but is it where we, we need it to be for the people we have? And I don't know to, to what degree that would change, you know, any of the community benefits to it. And maybe Todd has a better answer.
Chuck, I, I will say that the water park is pretty centrally located right now, you know, from a walkability standpoint, and just from a community standpoint, it's easy to get to. We'd have to do a little more research to see if, you know, building something at, at the Good Life District would be, you know, as walkable as, as you're saying. You know, I just would like to, while I have the opportunity here, remind council that, you know, we have talked about this a few times, we did, we went through the master plan, and we, and as, as Patrick, he stated, we are in the middle of a, a design right now, it's a one million dollar design contract, and, you know, the, from the feedback that we had, I, you know, we, we talked about the putt-putt golf, and, and this, and the, and the children's play, dedicated children's spray areas. So that was kind of the direction we were going with it, so of course, we always take direction, I know, you know, with the, you know, the opportunities of the Good Life District, a lot of things were fast-moving with that, so I mean, I, I understand that as well, but I just wondered, I thought it was important so the council knew where we were at in that process. In fact, we are almost done with the design at this point.
So Todd, one more question, is that when we built the water park, we, we had two hundred people a day going to pier pool. And then when we built the water park, all of a sudden, we had two thousand, twenty-one hundred a day going to the water park. And so it was a huge investment in which we paid cash for, to put the water park in, but all of a sudden, it was such community interest and appreciation that everybody went to the water park. It was a great feature in Grand Island. And so I, when we went from fifty people a day to twenty-one hundred people a day, I thought it was a great, it was a great thing to do. What is the, because, but since then, we've had a lot of competition all around, everybody's been built a water park. What is our average attendance this summer? Do you have any idea what those numbers are?
So, yeah, we'll average about probably forty-five thousand swimmers in the summer. At our peak, like you said, we were at a hundred thousand swimmers, so, so it's, it's, it's dropped off quite a bit. And that was part of the master plan that we went through as well, to give us some ideas for updates, and some things that we think would freshen it up, and, and also, you know, be more attractive, you know, you know, for users, so, and even more revenue generation. So that was part of the, the idea with the putt-putt golf, and be able to, to basically operate the, the water park in, in that shoulder season, in, you know, in September, and maybe even early October, with the putt-putt golf, and some of those, those, you know, splash pad type features, so. But yeah, you're, you're correct, we've, you know, we probably have maybe half the attendance that we had back in the early days, when we were the only water park in the state of Nebraska at that time.
So do you think that Grand Island today and in the near future has the capacity for two locations for aquatic centers?
As, I think if you, I, I don't think you'd want to duplicate what you would, would have at the water park. I, I personally think that more of a neighborhood pool on the western side of town would be, would be a great, would be a great idea for swimming in this, in the community, is, is my thought. And of course, and in, we've, you know, the master plan did show a pretty big need for an indoor swimming pool as well.
Without duplicating services, though, would it be easier to manage one location versus two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Todd.
Mr. O'Neill.
Just a few thoughts here. Just right now, you know, I have two public pools, basically kind of more on the east side of town, nothing really big on the west side of town for public things. I, I think it's helpful in the community to have things spread out a little bit throughout town, instead of consolidated in one area. I live very close to Island Oasis, and I do know a lot of people do walk there, and my kids have walked there a lot of times over the years as well. As far as where we're at now, if you wanted to change that, so there's already a master plan at both the Good Life District and for Island Oasis, and that would involve changing both of them, it's not redesigned for either one, in my opinion, I think you're fairly late in the game to be making changes of that significance to it. And I'd encourage trying to have source, sites spread out throughout town. The, the water park is more of an outdoor facility, the aquatic center probably more of like indoor lap swimming type of thing, those are very different environments. I, I swim quite a bit, I've been involved in the swimming community for a long time, but I think there, I, I understand how logically you can kind of look at synergies there, but I think outdoor and indoor aquatics are very, very different as well.
Mr. Nickerson.
I would agree. I, I think that we need to be very careful before we, and I'm just going to use the word scrap, any of the full development of Island Oasis. And, and the reason is, we've already talked about the central location, but there's even something bigger than that, and that is the number of people who we have coming into this community now, for the many, major events that are happening, that need something to do. And we've got teens, galore, shooting, we have whatever other events happen throughout this city through the course of a summer, and that's a great place to have a miniature golf course, it's a great place to have places for the families, we've got a casino that's open, they've got something else to do right there when they're not gambling, during the daytime, or whatever, however that works, I don't know the gambling scenario, but when you bring your families to a casino, you have something right there, you're going to have it right there, walkable. I think we need to invest in both, and I think we have the funding and the revenue streams to invest in both. And both serve a good purpose, but to Ryan's point, we can, we can investigate and look at what potential outside activities could you have in the Good Life District, but we already got Island Oasis here that's an anchor, and we have a great development plan. If I remember right, those folks have said they could make it happen by next season, which I can't believe, but they say they can. If everything lines up just right, we can have a miniature golf course next season, we can have divided pools next season, we can have all these things done to deliver to people that had input in what they would like to see at the Island Oasis. These folks said this is what we want. Even with the Good Life District being in development, which is still in flux, we still don't know what's going to happen there, nor how quickly can it happen, we have the opportunity to deliver something good to this community and all the visitors very quickly. We have the potential of some cash and some financing, and I don't, I'm assuming Patrick Collier's were only financed, was there any cash component to that at all in those?
So, so actually, the scenario that I ended up with was the, do an Island Oasis, the three million, Stolly Park Train Area for two and a half, the, yeah, freezing here.
While you're looking for that, did you have, you did not have the full Island Oasis factored in at all?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, this one right here. So that's one point three million for full financing.
It's one point three million for what?
So if it's, so it would be a one point three million dollar payment per year for twenty years.
Oh, for twenty years.
So what I ended up with was the Ryder Park Baseball Field, Stolly Park Train Area, basic improvements on Island Oasis. And once those are completed, and then the donations that were coming in for those two projects, I would pay, I would recommend paying off the Veterans Sports Legacy Loan, and then all of that would be funded under food and beverage, keeping debt structure the same, so it's not taken from general fund. I, you know, one thing that councils, there are more capital requests coming, and I will tell you, between the Heartland Event Center, City Hall, Police Department Library, you're looking at a ten to fifteen million dollar request. So that's coming, yeah.
Yeah, but you keep talking about the basic Island Oasis, that's the only three million dollar project.
Yes, that's, that, and that's what, you know, I'm just putting that out there.
No, but I'm...
If council wants to go a different direction, absolutely.
Right, I'm talking about, what scenario do we have, the fifteen point nine plus all the rest of these, with maybe a partial cash payment, and you're financing the others? I mean, there, there is a, I've had this conversation via email with you, only, only just to pick your brain, and, you know, we talked about what is a reasonable excess cash balance, and I ask you, kind of, what do you feel comfortable with? Because we don't want to pull that down too quickly, we just don't. So do you still have those feelings of what you feel is a comfortable level, that you would not want to pull down excess cash in one year?
You know, okay, so we have thirty percent, okay, and that's, to me, our minimum.
And I, and I don't even count that, I'm counting the excess.
I think anything under half of excess, I would...
So roughly, we would say with twenty-two?
Yeah.
Or we're, are we projecting twenty?
Let's say ten to eleven.
So ten to eleven million dollars cash you would feel okay about trying to put into this mass group of projects, but also financing?
Yes.
A reasonable balance?
You would have to finance, I'd...
Yeah.
And, and yeah, and I separated Island Oasis because it's, that's, it's large, and it needs to be a longer period.
But they can do it within a year. I mean, we've got to pay it off longer, but they can get it done within a year, they're saying, which is just unbelievable, as far as I'm concerned. So it's, to me, I, I think it's still the way to go, for the sake of the community, for the sake of the visitors, and that location. I see the Good Life District as something even, just totally different with potential, we can take a look at that, that, that's a never-ending project for a while. But I would like to, personally like to see, how do you, how do you make Island Oasis one hundred percent whole of what they would like, and be able to chip away at the others, but know how much that could be cash, and how much of it needs to be financed? Do we want to go ten years, fifteen years? What is that, what's that reasonable amount? Because I don't have the mental, total in my head, but what is it, twenty-some million, if we throw this all together?
Yeah, it would be actually close to twenty-five.
So twenty-five million?
If you, if you include everything, it's twenty-five.
Yeah, and so if you're willing to put ten dol, ten million cash towards that, now we're wanting to finance maybe fifteen million or so, it's, it's just those financing...
Actually, it's thirty million.
Is it thirty million? Okay, so I see it's still a big number to finance. But if we can pay part of that with cash, and still leave what I'd consider a very, and you as well, consider a healthy reserve, if that's ten or eleven million at the end of the year, excess reserve, that seems...
And so, when you have, one, two, three, four, five, four to five different projects, there's a lot of combinations you could do.
Sure.
Right? So if we do it all, I would seriously have to look at street projects, because I'm going to have to use some of two thousand four sales tax. That affects Keith. It would give him time to adjust, but you're going to, it's, it's a trickle effect. So it, as you can tell from the budget, revenues and expenses were pretty close right there with no fluff. And you got to make the payment somewhere, and that money's got to come from somewhere.
Sure.
So then, are we going to have enough money to fund Todd's smaller projects? So, that's, that's the things that, that I'm very wary of, on how's it affecting everything else?
You're not really, you're comfortable with excess cash of maybe eleven million, but not really a hundred percent comfortable with that.
It's conversation actually with Keith.
Sure. Yeah, and I guess the other question is, is there any of these projects that could be pushed out a year, that would make it a little easier?
Absolutely.
I mean, or you got to ask the question, I don't know what that project would be, but if anything could be pushed back a year, that can save you anywhere from, I would not, I would not advocate for the Stolly Park project to be pushed back, because too many people have contributed to see something successful there. So those were people who put money in and said, we want to see results, I definitely think they need to see those results. But the question would be, what other project, and I'm not counting Island Oasis, just because of the potential that can be done in a year and deliver immediately on activities?
What you have left is Ryder, Ryder Field and the trail to Camp Augustine, being pushed a year or two.
About six million plus, whatever, so. Okay, well, lots of conversations, but no answers, but that's kind of where we're at right now.
I'm going to take a break, just because Mr. Melama requested to speak, so. Then I'll return to you, Mr. Hawsey. Mr. Melama, please come forward.
My pleasure to be here to talk a little bit about the trail, it's been already referenced tonight, and I'm not going to provide lots of answers, Mitch, but I'm going to try to give you some, some things to think about as it relates to that particular project. A six million dollar potential trail from Grand Island City Trail System to Camp Augustine and Mormon Island as a connector project is, is a heavy lift. But I think Grand Island today is in an upward trajectory with our economy and what's going. Just look around town, look at what's happening around this community. I live in the world of hotels and hospitality, huge investments, hundreds of millions of private dollars in investments that see what's happening here, and they're willing to put their dollars into the hospitality business. We, as a community, need to deliver the product, which is experience for peoples to come here, obviously people that live here as well. When the Camp Augustine project was first proposed, and kind of a dream, City of Grand Island stepped up in a big way, made the purchase, moved that forward at light speed. We were looking at ways, how could we finance it, how can we do this, how can we get it done? And when you begin to look at that project, and what its future is, and my understanding is, Tim McCoy, not Todd, to be confused with, is going to come and present to you in the very near future about the Camp Augustine project as it relates to the State Game and Parks Commission, and what's going on there, and we believe that that connector to the project there is really important. Chuck, you brought up, who, who rides their bikes to these things? That beautiful new project that's coming forward down there, is it the realm only of automotive people? It probably would be at this point, right? But to connect that project with a bike trail, and to show the future of our community and where it's growing towards that recreational and that outdoor opportunity is huge. Now, the price itself is hard to swallow. I, I get it, that's, that's a chunk of change. But when you look at the greater totality of the project that we're putting down at Augustine, and you look at the totality of the impact, and the change, and the trajectory of what's happening here in Grand Island, I, I don't want to diminish that cost that you see there, because you, as council members, rightly will ask hard questions about that, and is it really worth it? Mitch's comment a few weeks ago, I doubt I'll see anyone on it, or I would be surprised to see some such version of that. Okay, fair enough. But I'm going to come back to you in the future and present materials, information, data on other projects in Nebraska that are similar to the settings that we have here in Grand Island, and show you how that project is worth it, and how that growth and leadership that you can provide in this unique place and time where we can get this thing done. I'm also going to communicate to you that we've got partners, okay? We've got partners. And the key thing here is, we are working, and Tanya's here with Grow Grand Island, I think she's still here, there you go, you didn't duck out the back, with Grow Grand Island, Mary with the Chamber in Economic Development, Melissa with the Community Foundation, are all in lockstep, that we are willing to work together as partners to form a, a group to fundraise for that specific project, and to work alongside with the city for grants and other ways to fund that, okay? Just like maybe you saw with Stolly Park, Ryder Field, and some other recent projects, Purney Inclusive Playground, those types of things. And we want you to know that, we don't expect you to know all the answers, it's a big dollar lift, there's lots of things in the community that, I know, wow, that's tough, but I want to help to show you how that... And we want you to know that, we don't expect you to know all the answers. It's a big dollar lift, there's lots of things in the community that, I know, wow, that's tough, but I want to help to show you how that is gonna make sense, and how in five, ten, and twenty years, you can say, wow, it's one of the better decisions we made for growth in our community. And so I wanted to come forward and just kind of give you that heads up. We're excited about this, we think it has enormous potential, and would be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time, but again, look for more statistics studies and dollar impacts in the future. We wanted to come to you this evening with that message.
We're gonna have you back on the nineteenth to present some study detail, okay?
Happy to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Hossi, you had a question?
I'll just wait for the next, because Art, we're at our time limit, so I, I'll just delay for the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hossi. I guess we'll adjourn at this time so that city administration can reset us for our regular meeting, which starts at seven o'clock.
But I think to draw them in conjunction with what you have going, you're gonna have a school there.
Yeah, there'll be a school there. Yep. If you're gonna do residential like.
It won't go without a school.
No, and I think that's why it's smart that we have that area blocked off. Uh, we just are, we have the, not with them specifically, but the thing we couldn't do last time. The ordinance, the Good Life. I'm just a dreamer though, you know, I'm just thinking. Imagine all those teams coming up there. On the trail?
Yeah, trail.
Yeah, that would be huge. I think, especially if you got a third of it maybe, if you got two million of it. Yeah, yeah.
I think it's, I think it's, what's gonna go, what's gonna happen out there, I think it's needed.
To, somebody I'm missing this for the mayor, uh, yesterday, talked to a guy who does AI, uh, offsetting, and his company, they get businesses. So anyway, this guy I was talking to, organization, a company like, say Walmart, who's, uh, started to use a lot more AI, as they use more AI, that, there has a carbon footprint that comes with it, and Walmart uses it, comes with that, the environmental impact. And what his company does is, they do an offset of, of that usage. So Walmart might say, we're gonna give you a million dollars to plant trees. And they were, they wanna plant trees along South Locust so that we have trees and shade along that trail, something we wouldn't have to invest in. Hi, sorry.
No, you're good, I'm sorry. So this, this is Holly.
Yeah.
This is Holly.
Hi, nice to meet you. Yeah. Well, it makes that trail a lot better too, if there's shade. Um, but they do other things, but when I talked to him about it, I was telling him about this trail, and he's like, hey, that's the kind of thing we want to get involved with. You get, you get, these other businesses, they don't care where it ends up. They could be from California, they could be Silicon Valley, but they're, they're doing anything they can to offset it. So if they're planting a hundred trees in South Locust, that might be paid for by Silicon Valley, it might be paid by somebody in Chicago or New York. But they have to do something. They could do it here, and we could partner with this company, and they would help us with it. Right, right. Well, it's one of those things that it'll be hard, it'll be hard for me to want to go out there. Gotta be, well, there's gotta be some shade eventually. You know, it's just a dead straight into the wind shade, no matter what you're doing. But if you had some trees out there, that'd add some life to it, and make it look nicer too. If people start to use South Locust, you know, and see that.
Welcome to our meeting. The date is August five, two thousand and twenty-five, the time is seven PM. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The City of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The city council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. At this time, let's please stand and perform the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The deputy city clerk will now perform roll call.
Council President Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Connolly.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hossi.
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Pollak.
Present.
Councilmember Lanfair.
Present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present. Also present are Sonia Cisneros, the deputy city clerk, Patrick Brown, the assistant city administrator and chief financial officer, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, and Keith Kurtz, the public works director. Individuals who have appropriate items for city council consideration should, should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. Council members, do you wish to remove any of tonight's consent agenda items?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, six M.
Mr. Nickerson has removed six M from the consent agenda. Any others? We, we shall continue. A sign-up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name, and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. No one has come forward, so we shall continue. Uh, one matter in our consent agenda is six F approving appointment of Benjamin McCarty and Holly Anderson to the library board. And Mr. McCarty and Ms. Anderson are both here this evening. I'd like you please both to stand so that the city council members can see that you'll now be taking on duties with the library board, and I, when I met you down front, I said, we're very proud of our library and very proud of the work that our library director, Celine Swan, and her staff do, so welcome onboard to the library board, and thank you for being here so that we got a chance to see who you are and to know, uh, your dedication to public service. So council, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items six A through O with the exception of M? Mr. O'Neil?
I move the, approve the consent agenda items A through L and N through O.
Mr. Connolly?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Consent agenda item six M, approving subrecipient agreement, community development block grant number two zero two-three dash six with Central District Health Department. Mrs. Alvidrez, please tell us about this.
Yes, this item is to approve the subrecipient agreement with the Central District Health Department for a program that we allocated funds, CBG funds from a previous year. This is a newer program that we haven't really seen in our community or in others, so we worked closely with HUD to kind of formulate what steps and make sure it matches and fits well with CBG, hence kind of why it's coming a little later than, um, majority would for this year as well. So we do have some representatives from the Health Department here that can explain the program a little better and what they intend to do with it and how they intend to implement it if you're.
Those are Teresa Anderson and is it Ashley Hall? Good evening.
So we have been working with Amber over the course of, I don't know, a year and a half maybe, to make sure that we're on the right track with all of this. People wonder why we're getting into childcare remediation, because that's exactly what this is, is making the homes come up to code. We can't enforce licensure on individuals in our community, but we can work with them collaboratively to help them bring their facilities up to code, and in the process then, hopefully, let's say we have someone who needs an egress window so that they can put kiddos in their basement. We can work with them through this process, which has been very well defined, and Amber's worked very closely with us to develop that, the whole criteria for, um, qualific, qualifying for the loan and the whole process that goes through the whole thing. So let's say that egress window's put in, and now that childcare provider can bring in two or three more kids, so two, two or three more parents can go back into the workforce. So that's the HUD part of it, is making sure that we're addressing workforce needs, but we're also protecting our most vulnerable and our most precious population by improving childcare settings in private homes.
Thank you.
Questions?
Uh, we'll, we'll see first if we have a motion, and I think Mr. Nickerson's going to make a motion right now.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, we approve
six M.
twenty twenty-five dash two five four.
Mr. Hossi?
I would second that motion.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Nickerson, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Teresa and Ashley for being here. I will ask you a couple of questions here shortly, but one, two of the things that we hear most about, that I hear most about in this community is it's always housing, and then it's gonna be childcare. Those are two major obstacles that people are fighting all the time. Now, when I saw this on the agenda, I thought, okay, you know, what is this all about? And so you, you have elaborated tonight a little bit more on that. So egress window's a good example. If I understand correctly, just to become a childcare provider, it already has a lot of rules you have to follow. How does a, is, is this for current providers more than likely, or somebody that wants to be a provider, does it matter who it goes to? How, how, how does this, these funds get distributed to the right parties?
Across the state, there are licensed in, in-home providers and non-licensed in-home providers. There's no requirement that they be licensed. So we would, the license require, the licensed childcare centers are up to code. They've got everything they need, or they wouldn't be able to have the license. What we want to do is bring those other homes up to speed, up to code. We can't, we want to enable them to get that license. We can't force them to through this process, so it's, we can't guarantee that we're gonna have six more licensed childcare, uh, in-home providers. But we can, what we can do is assure that the kiddos in their homes are safer.
How will people know about the program to know it's even available?
Gosh, we've been working on childcare issues. That's one of our four or five priorities in our community health improvement plan, as is housing, as is transportation, as is access to healthcare and access to behavioral health. So we've got this scope of work that we're engaged in right now. Childcare providers, we've got people who are active in the childcare coalition. We've got folks on the continuum of care. So we have a lot of communication going on. We have, I don't know, with that continuum of care, I think that we can email 173 people and tell them that way. We'll also put it on our website. So we'll have some word of mouth, but we'll also have the website. We do radio every Wednesday morning, fortunately, and we will present it at the radio station when we have our time there. We'll do everything we can to get the word out. It might be competitive. We might have a lot of people who apply. Oh, Amber, what's our limit per person? For 20, oh, thank you, I should have asked. Ashley, Ashley's going to manage the program, so she's up to speed on the specifics. I'm just the generalist with this. So 20,000, so that gives us some funds to bring five childcare facilities up to speed.
Okay. Ashley, how do you feel about what you've heard so far and the exposure it's going to get? And I guess the success of a program like this, what do you think?
I think it's going to be regular community, it's going to help the workforce and also help the moms feel better about dropping their kids off also as a mom. That's really important. Also, we have a lot of collaborators that we work with all the time, many different organizations and connections with all of us at the Health Department. We kind of work as a team.
Okay. You talked about egress windows, which obviously is a very big safety thing. What other things might someone be interested in in a program such as this?
Like new outlets, safer outlets, fire alarms, things like that.
Okay.
Smoke detectors, CO2 monitors, fences. If, for instance, someone may have a pool or may have properties that's too close to the road, they need a fence installed, so we'll be looking at those kinds of things.
And are any matching funds required for this from the recipient?
There are not for this particular grant.
Well, it sounds like something that can be very beneficial to a select number of people. Obviously, you got to start somewhere and then we see what happens in the future. But it sounds like a good opportunity for us. Okay.
Okay. I was going to say, this is similar. We've got a HUD grant in the works right now for lead abatement in homes, and we're in the planning year right now. But we're going to be doing the same kind of thing where we're addressing lead paint in homes and working with them. And so it'll be a process where we will be paying the contractors, not the individual homeowners or the renters. It would be the same with this, where we'd be paying the contractors so that we know the work's being done.
All right, super. Sounds like a great program. Okay, thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Public hearing, seven A. Public hearing on the 2025 Annual Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant Activities. Mrs. Alvidrez, please present this for us.
Just a second here. Okay, as I mentioned, this public hearing is regards to our submitted of the 2025 Annual Action Plan. As an entitlement community, in order to receive our federal allocation from HUD, we do have to have two plans in place, one being an updated consolidated plan. We updated our current one last year. It is a five-year plan and acts as kind of our strategic plan of how we plan on using the annual allocation over the next five years. And within that, we developed a few goals for how we want to use funds. Those goals are as follows: increase quality and affordable housing, support economic opportunities and development, support education, outreach, and services for low to moderate income persons, and support public facilities and infrastructure. Another plan that we have to have in place each year is our Annual Action Plan. I do apologize as I am turning this. We realize that I have an error on this page. We have on here that our total funding is $539,081. That is incorrect. Our actual allocation is $349,000. The math below should hopefully add up correctly. Excuse me. In May, we received our allocation notice from HUD that we would be eligible for the $349,081 pursuant to submitting the Annual Action Plan and having it approved. Throughout the creation of this Annual Action Plan, we typically develop it during the spring. This year was a little different. Typically, we partner with lots of community partners, like as you just noticed in our past program that was just presented. We like to work with community partners and subrecipients to help get these funds and meet different areas of the community that are in need. With a lot of the new federal executive orders that have came out have changed some regulations on our CBG funds. At this time, the guidance for those aren't fully out and they're not completely clear. And so to help reduce kind of that risk, not only to the city, but also our subrecipients that would normally, we would open this up to, until we understand those more clearly, we decided as city staff, along with our entitlement stakeholders group that kind of reviews our applications and our projects, that would probably reduce the risk and be safest to go through with city-type projects this year until we kind of understand those waters a little more. And hopefully, next year, we can maybe go back or reevaluate that. And so this year, we plan on using $65,000 for program administration, which helps reimburse the city for us administering the program. And then we plan on using $283,081 for public facility and infrastructure projects. That's going to be split at this time into two different projects, $199,999 to a wastewater project. I think it's either been brought up a few times or it's about to be presented, the project on East Dolly Park Road. And that one, we are going to work through a few hurdles to make sure that it fits. We believe that we can make it work into our HUD funding to use our CBG dollars that way. The other part of the funding, we will be using $83,082 on curb ramps throughout various areas in town. And that is all we have in our Annual Action Plan for our projects this year. It's a little shorter, not going through the subrecipients. But as we said, with that knowledge of reducing the risk of the new executive orders and making sure that we can meet the new ones and anticipating that more executive orders will come forward, we thought sticking with city projects this year would be our best, our best option.
Thank you. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, a public hearing?
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve Resolution 2025-257.
Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I'll second that.
Mr. Nickerson, discussion?
First observation, I find it interesting that there's a project for $199,999. Is that because it couldn't exceed, couldn't be 200,000 or more? I'm not sure. You don't have to answer that. It's just bizarre. But the other part of that, for that project, it didn't sound like we're 100% sure that this is going to meet the criteria. If for some reason it does not, what would Plan B be?
So in our plan, we have it lumped that the actual project in the plan is listed just as public facilities and infrastructure. That backup would be that it always probably more than likely would go to curb ramp projects.
It would go to what?
Curb ramp projects.
So the whole amount would go to the curb ramp project?
Yes.
Okay. And how long do you think it will take to decipher all the rules and regulations to know if it will fit?
We would, we're hopeful that we would probably know before the program year starts, which is October 1st. We anticipate that it'll take HUD longer than that to get us our approval letter, but that we would know before we got our approval letter to start the project or not, or if we would have.
They would more than likely bless it to move forward and then give you the official documentation after the fact then?
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good. Thanks.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution eight A, approving bid award for Ryder Park Baseball Field Improvements-REBID. Good evening, Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been talking about this exciting project to renovate the Ryder Park Baseball Field for some time. Council's seen it a few times. Just a reminder, we've worked with supporters in the community, the Grand Island or the American Legion Baseball Organization, baseball enthusiasts on this project. They gave a presentation to City Council regarding this project to basically renovate the facility, put new synthetic turf, new dugouts, new lights, new batting cages, stadium improvements. So we took this out to bid. The low bid came from Niemhaas Sports Construction for $3,745,000, $3,745,600. Private donations have been received or private donations are at the community foundation of $182,662. In probably the next council meeting, I just wanted to note this, we have a collegiate baseball team, a travel-type baseball team, like the, oh, the Sodbusters and Hastings. So we'll have an agreement potentially coming forward to City Council here in the future. So that's a possibility in the future. I wanted to let you know about that. And so I also wanted to let you know, this was the second, this was the second time we bid it. The first bid came in too high. We did pull, we did work with our community partners, our baseball partners, and we reduced the size of the project. We did take out the bathrooms and the concession stand and the softball fields. And I know Clint's here and he signed up, Clint Ruther. He's led the private fundraising efforts and I think he signed up to speak and he can kind of speak to the fundraising efforts and maybe the scope of the project and maybe some potential for, you know, adding some of those other amenities later on as maybe a second phase. So we are recommending an award of this bid tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Clint Ruther?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I will just kind of give you a little quick rundown of where we are with the fundraising efforts first and I'll kind of open up the questions after that. So we've kind of gone out to the community, not to a large number of the community, but to probably more substantial donors. We have commitments of just short of a million dollars. Some of those commitments are over three years. Some were paid up full annual, some are committed over three years, and several of them are over a five-year commitment. So that's kind of where Todd came up with the number of 182,000. That is what's in the account currently. There are future committed dollars pledged, signed with the Greater Grand Island Community Foundation that we anticipate will be coming in. We don't have those yet. We have, I kind of put a little bit of a pause on the fundraising effort over the last month or two to make sure we knew where we're going to be with the commitment, with the project. I didn't want to extend ourselves out to where we went out and asked for money and things didn't work out, especially after the initial bid came back where it was at and we had to make some changes. I know that I have a group of people that are ready to go out again and raise some more dollars. Probably the main source of that fundraising intention will be to go towards the concession stands and bathrooms and hopefully get that done in a matter that we can get it to be part of the initial project. It'll be a little bit of a delay, but I think there's some things that I can do to make it happen quite quickly, next year even, within the next year. So that's kind of, I hope I kind of laid that out easy enough for what I'm seeing, for you guys to see what I'm thinking too. Any questions at this point from what I've described?
We may take that up after we have a motion and a second. So thank you for speaking to us. Mr. Pollak?
Withhold our funding for the saw or baseball fields at Ryder Park until October 14th?
Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Any discussion? Mr. Nickerson?
What is significant about October 14th?
It's a date after you've approved a budget. Is that correct, Mr. Brown?
It'd be September 23rd would be the next City Council meeting after the budget approval. So October 14th is just, what, two or three more weeks?
But I guess what's significant about that?
I think, go ahead.
Council members, pursuant to Nebraska revised statute 16501, you cannot award a contract unless you have previously made the budget appropriation for that contract. So we got to get the budget done first before you can do the formal award of the contract.
Okay, so the September 23rd is the budget approval. And so then you would say you'd recommend a couple of weeks after that or whatever is the next reasonable meeting. Do you know what those funds are? And then you have the ability to award those, but currently, we do not have that ability.
The budget will be hopefully approved on September 9th.
Okay. So if it were, again, would you have to wait till the 14th to award a contract?
Soon as that budget ordinance has been passed and that appropriation has been made, you can do it after that. So that would depend, of course, it's an ordinance on whether you have enough folks at that first meeting to suspend the rules and proceed. So first meeting after the budget's done, you can go anytime thereafter.
So instead of having a firm number, a firm date, would it be reasonable to modify that just so that funding is known to have the, what was the budget date approval, the 9th? And so you'd have two weeks after that, which would be the 23rd, which would be, or... So I guess I'm just trying to play devil's advocate. Why do we need to wait till the 14th when we might be able to do it on the 23rd? So 23rd or later, or, you know, no sooner than the 23rd or something. I guess 14th just seems kind of odd to be out there in the middle of October.
Council member, I suspect it's because your ordinances technically don't become effective until 15 days after you pass them. So building in that delay for publication time, my guess is with the meeting schedule, that's where that date came from. But...
Okay. Just curious.
Mr. Pollak?
The reason for this is to look at all our monetary problems we have. You know, you look at this board and it doesn't look like a problem, but you add up Todd's projects and we're looking at in excess of $34 million. And if you add them up, that's what it comes to. And then we have other people asking for a million for land and two million for sewers. And we need to get a hold of this before we do a whole lot of spending. And we can sit down and get a budget worked out, but not if we're going to piecemeal it together like this.
Mr. Sheard?
I kind of agree with you, Mike. I think we have to wait anyway because we don't have the budget authority to do it. So, but I like what Patrick said in the meeting earlier tonight, that we'll have all of this in front of us and we can look at it. My question back to you, Todd, and to you is, does this impact you negatively, us waiting? Does this, do we have to rebid it for some reason?
So just a little more background and maybe in the initial presentation. So we did budget a million dollars in this year's budget for this project to get us started with this project. So we have about $440,000 that we budgeted for the, or we have a contract for the engineering. So that gives us a little over half a million dollars that we would not spend by the time, you know, the next fiscal kicked in for sure. And it was my understanding, and maybe we just need to have an internal conversation, but my understanding... but it was my understanding that the contract, the way the contract reads is, is that all, all, any contracts are basically pending funding approval through city council. So, our budget appropriation. So, if for some reason, city council at budget time decided not to, then yeah, we would halt that project. We would, we wouldn't be able to spend whatever, $3.7 million.
This is something that I think, I mean, if I were voting to accept this today, I would vote yes, that I want to do this. It's just a matter of procedural, of when we can do it.
The other issue, I'll tell you, is just timing. Our hope was to get this ball field done so that it would not impact the high school baseball season. So, we are, we are trying to get this project going quickly right now, basically, so that we could get started on this, so that we can play the high school baseball season.
Weather will kind of impact that now, more of a risk for that.
Yep, it sure can. That's why they were going to try to get as much done as they can this year, in fact.
So, I guess just a clarification here, we don't really have a choice, though, right? We're saying, Mayor, we're saying we don't have a choice, but we have to delay until we've approved this.
My understanding, and I just, to the point that the contract may say it's contingent upon the council approving the money, it's a personal thing with me, but I have to put my name on those contracts. So, I don't, I don't like to sign contracts, and then, and then if the council said, no, we're not going to fund that, then have the potential of litigation as to whether a clause like that is effective. It might be, but I like to avoid arguments like that. I don't like to sign agreements and then say, but maybe it won't happen. I mean, if we're going to sign an agreement, I think it's prudent to wait. Oh, I, actually, I just agree with Mr. Pollak. It's prudent to sort through all the projects and not piecemeal them. I think that's a great word. And that's just, that's just a public policy decision as to whether you do it that way or take up things individually.
Again, I, I think this is a project we've talked about, we've wanted, we appreciate the community being involved with it. I know from talking to some of the coaches, the improvements are going to be great. But, yeah, I'd hate to say yes to a contract and then see, as Mike said, maybe it doesn't rank up there compared to some of the other things on your list. So, yeah, I agree with the motion to hold off. But that's not a negative to the project.
Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Mike's motion, and I think, and I'm supportive, I'm glad that the community is getting involved in this thing. But our past practice, both from on the council and when I was with staff, we always had to have the appropriation on, in order to pass, approve a contract. It's just been our past practice. I don't know the legal side. All I do know is that we have to have that, because I don't think we've ever gotten into any of these contingency issues that I'm aware of in the past.
Mr. Nickerson?
This question would be for our city attorney. Are there any other things coming before this council in the next four weeks, four and a half weeks, that are going to put us in this same situation?
I don't believe so. Typically, you'll see on the memos that clarity that budget funds have been appropriated in that year's fiscal budget. That's usually your sign that this is not a problem. So, I'm not aware of any that have ever had this problem before, or hopefully will again.
Okay. Thank you.
Please vote. Oh, sorry, hold on. I'm going to reset. Can you guys, I think we had, Lan, mhm, can Mike and, oh, Doug, can you guys go down? Can you select again?
Thank you.
And that was a motion to postpone till October 14th, correct?
Yes.
Okay. See if we can get this to go here. Okay, please vote.
This is a motion to postpone until the October 14th meeting. This is the, this is a motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion to approve postponement. Yeah, a motion to approve the postponement. Sorry. It's a, okay, let's restart it. Do you have an option to do it now?
Yes, I want to do a voice vote, just to recall the rule, have everybody vote.
Okay, yep, let's do that. Council President Sheard?
Yes.
Councilmember Stelk? Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickerson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Hossi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollak?
Yes.
And Councilmember Lanfair?
Yes.
Motion adopted.
Resolution nine B, approving amendment to agreement between city and Nebraska Game and Parks Department for mentor youth archery program. Mr. McCoy, are you presenting on this? Mr. McCoy, can you present on the youth archery program?
Sorry, this was not my item. I am not up to date on this item.
Okay, well, this is, this item involves the.
Mayor, this is my item.
Okay.
Good evening, council. The city has had an agreement with Nebraska Game and Parks for a number of years, since about 2014, to provide for use of the city wellfields by the archery youth mentor program. There was feedback from neighboring property owners to the wellfields that they felt like the hunting in the fall for the deer disrupted activities that they had on their property. So, Nebraska Game and Parks has requested an amendment to the contract to allow use of the wellfields for only turkey hunting in the spring. So, it removes the fall deer season from the contract.
Thank you. The motion is in order, council. Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I move that we pass Resolution 2025-259.
Mr. O'Neil?
I second.
Please, please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution eight C, ratifying procurement for Heartland Event Center emergency repairs. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. This is to ratify a procurement of the Heartland Event Center chillers. We need to do this for our contract obligation to the state fair. If you're going out to the Heartland Event Center, you'll actually see it sitting there on the southwest side. So, it is now cooling the billing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve Resolution 2025-260, and I have seen it sitting on the side.
Mr. Pollak?
And I would second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We'll now take up our ordinances, nine A, consideration of vacating part of a road easement and a utility easement, two one one, Midaro Drive, second and final reading. Mr. Kurtz?
Good evening. I'm here to talk about this. Chad started this a couple of weeks ago. There wasn't enough present to suspend the rules, so we're here for the second and hopefully final reading. The first one is, I was just going to bring this up. Essentially, the property owner down here is re-subdiving this area and is requesting to vacate a small portion of right-of-way, which would be right here on your map. If you could see, Midaro Drive was constructed a little differently. I don't know the entire history of this, but as you can see, it is over here. And so, this is redundant right-of-way that they're looking to vacate. And then, they are also looking to vacate this utility easement right here. As I understand, it was used for a pumping operation for a gravel pit. Obviously, it's no longer being pumped, so they don't need the easement. So, it was recommended that we vacate both of these items.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve ordinance 10,027.
I'm sorry, we need to.
Oh, sorry. To suspend the rules, sorry.
Mr. Brown?
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote.
Second and final. Unless you want to hear Chad talk about it a third time next week.
And now, on the merits of the ordinance. Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve ordinance 10,027.
Mr. Brown?
I second that motion.
Discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance nine B, consideration of vacating ingress egress easement located at 1941 and 1949 Trinity Street, second and final reading. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes, similar to a couple of weeks ago, again, this was brought forward to vacate this easement here in Trinity Heights subdivision. The developer is looking at changing some of the lot sizes around here, and thus, this easement is not going to be in the right spot after those lot lines move. So, they're requesting to vacate it now, and then, when they replat, they will dedicate a new easement. The idea, I believe, on this was to create a sidewalk from the church parking lot over to Trinity Street.
Drew Snyder, you signed up to speak on agenda item nine.
Well, he put nine A, but he.
You want to speak on nine C? I'm sure he wants to speak on nine C. It's, okay. Mr. Brown?
I move we approve 10,028.
And this is to suspend the rules? Motion to suspend the rules. Is that okay, Mr. Brown? And Mr. Pollak?
I second that.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Please vote, sorry. Motion adopted.
And now, on the merits of ordinance 10,028, Mr. Brown?
I move we approve 10,028.
Thank you, Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance nine C, consideration to amend various provisions of the City of Grand Island's Good Life District Economic Development Program as codified in Grand Island City Code as Chapter 38, Article 2, to authorize any other actions necessary to implement the program and to provide for publication and an effective date of this ordinance. Second and final reading. Mrs. Fisk, please present this for us.
Mayor, members of council, as you've heard now a few times, this ordinance is here to incorporate into your Good Life District program ordinance the requirements of LB 707. Those substantive changes are outlined in your council memo, and I won't rehash them for you unless you have particular questions about those changes.
Mr. Snyder, do you wish to be heard on this matter? Mrs. Fisk, would you kindly step outside and see if Drew Snyder is here?
He's in the blue shirt. He's in that blue shirt, standing outside. I believe that's him. Mayor, it doesn't appear Mr. Snyder is anywhere I can see, at least.
Hey, Mr. Brown, do you have a motion to suspend the statutory rules?
Move we suspend the statutory rules?
Mr. Still?
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Now, on the merits. Mr. Brown?
I move we approve 10,029.
And Mr. O'Neil?
I second that.
Any discussion?
Mayor, Mr. Snyder is walking in the door.
Let's suspend the vote. Please approach the podium. And state your name, please.
Drew Snyder, president of Woodsonia Real Estate. Sorry, it sounds like I'm running a little late. Went over to the ConStoga Mall, and excited to say the movie theater was hopping. So, anyway, I apologize. I left after the work session. But, anyway, I just am here, more than anything, to just provide a quick update in terms of our group in relation to the Good Life District. We're excited. Obviously, there's been a lot going on with this legislative process. I know tonight, the council is considering a slight update to the economic development program. We did submit last week an updated MOU to city staff. So, I believe that is now with city staff. All of our visuals, renderings, everything, were completed, actually, today. So, I'm excited to announce that. I believe, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but if approved tonight, there'll be an updated application process. So, we'll go through, fill out that application process, get that totally complete. We'll do that as quickly as we can, and hopefully be back in front of the council. So, that was really all I had. I just wanted to provide a quick update, letting the council know we're fully engaged. You may not have heard from us in a while, but we've been monitoring everything that's happening, and still are very, very excited about the project. So, happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, that was really all I came to speak about, is just provide a quick update.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson.
I just wanted to confirm what Mr. Snyder said. So, this would be an updated application process. I mean, he said that. I just want to make sure everything's confirmed, that that is correct, and then, that's what would be happening.
Yes, the Community Development Department is working on amending their prior application form to incorporate these changes. I believe their hopes are to have it out early tomorrow morning for them, so that when they do their amended application, it's on the right forms with the right rules.
Very good. Thank you.
Please vote. Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance nine D, consideration, consideration to amend Chapter 1 of the city code pertaining to disposal of abandoned or found property. Mrs. Fisk?
Members of council, we've submitted this ordinance at the request of the Grand Island Police Department. Currently, when addressing lost and found property, they're holding all property for a fairly extensive period of time, regardless of the value of that property. So, they're holding a lost car, the same as they hold a lost T-shirt that's found in the park. So, this ordinance lets the property division reduce the amount of time they hold that property, if its value is under $500, to only 60 days, rather than having to hold that for a more extensive period of time. So, this hopefully will let them clear out their lost and abandoned property a little bit quicker. let them clear out their lost and abandoned property a little bit quicker.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we suspend the rules.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lanfair? Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
And on the merits, council, Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve ordinance 10,030.
Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Nickerson?
You talk about anything valued over $500 would be held longer?
So, yeah, right now, they're holding, they hold most of these items for 90 days. They, they have some pretty extensive processes, depending on what type of properties they hold, vehicles, they hold for significantly longer. This just lets them drop how long they're holding those items of low value, that have a very low recovery rate after the first 10 days, anyway. So, that way, they're not holding on to a bunch of things people didn't choose to pick up.
Do we know what happens to all those? They're not all sold necessarily, are they?
They, they have a variety of disposal policies, depending on the item. They're sold, they're thrown away in cases that they aren't sellable. It seems to depend on the type of item, but they have some pretty in-depth policies and procedures in place for how they evaluate each of those items.
Very good. Thank you.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We have completed our agenda. Have a nice evening.